Good evening, I call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City of Madison Heights. The time is 7:32. This is the regular council meeting of May 13th, 2019. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Mayor Protemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Gaddis.
Here.
Councilor Grafstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilman Robert Corbett and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing on our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose chance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we add Ordinance 2139 on first reading to ordinances, I believe, G3.
Mr. Mayor's support?
Thank you, support from Mr. Corbett. Motion was made by Mayor Protemblis, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to add to the agenda an item under G3, Ordinance 2139 on first reading. Is there discussion on this matter? All in favor to add signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Are there other additions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to add as a new D3 agreement between the Madison Heights Command Officers Union and the City of Madison Heights.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to add to tonight's agenda under Reports, D3, the agreement between Madison Heights and the Madison Heights Command Officers Union. Is there discussion on this item? All in favor to add signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Both motions to add have carried. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. We have several presentations tonight, there are five listed in the agenda. The first is a special retirement proclamation to our special environmental counsel Hugh Thomas. Hugh, I'm going to read this beautifully prepared testimonial recognizing your service to the city. Hugh, I then ask you to accept this and if you'd like to make any comments and introduce your guests. This is the City of Madison Heights Retirement Testimonial, where as special environmental counsel Hugh Thomas, Esquire, retires after more than thirty years of providing environmental legal services to the City of Madison Heights. Hugh has been a tireless advocate for the City of Madison Heights and its citizens as lead special environmental counsel by preventing SACRA from reopening and expanding its solid waste incinerator in Madison Heights, and he was instrumental in getting the state of Michigan to adopt legislation which established the first physical setback requirement for municipal solid waste incinerators located anywhere in the state of Michigan. Based upon Hugh's extensive knowledge and experience in the solid waste industry and regulation, Hugh represented the City of Madison Heights with distinction at the state, county, and local levels, as well as in litigations in both state and federal courts, resulting in the city being paid over half a million dollars for its equity subsequent to the city's withdrawal as a member of SACRA. Hugh has fought vigorously on behalf of our city and its residents to prevent SACRA from expanding operations in any manner that would adversely affect surrounding homes, schools, and the senior center, as well as eliminating the dumping of waste on SACRA property in the aftermath of the great storm of August 11th, 2014. Hugh's effort toward preventing the expansion of activities at the SACRA site have shown his deep commitment to protecting public health, safety, and welfare, as well as safeguarding the interests of the city and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Madison Heights, on behalf of the citizens of this community, wish to extend our sincere appreciation to special environmental counsel Hugh Thomas. Hugh?
Thanks for protecting us. Will you please speak after you've greeted everyone?
Thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement.
I wasn't planning to say anything, but I really enjoyed working for the city. It was an honor and a pleasure, and to see Margene and Bob here who were here when I started thirty-two years ago. It brings back a lot of memories. Thank you so much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Madam Manager, I'm Pete Connors, a retiree from the City of Madison Heights, and if I might, Mr. Mayor, take just a brief minute to tell a couple of stories. A couple of stories about Hugh Thomas and how he has impacted the citizens of this fine city. First off, the City of Madison Heights has always been graced with excellent legal service over the last thirty-eight years that I'm aware of, and the addition of Hugh Thomas was a really fine addition for us back then. The mayor and city council had a strong unified plan when they put in and they told staff that the plan was to shut down the incinerator and make sure that it never opened again. So we had a three-pronged attack. The first was mayor and council, of course, setting the road. Second was a fine local group of residents called Clean Air Please, and they were very instrumental in helping us out. And lastly, there was the attack team of Hugh Thomas, who we called Bulldog, and the opponents called him a one-man wrecking crew. Then there was Larry, who was the sweet talker, who could solve problems with that. And I'd like for a minute for people to look back historically and imagine the audacity of a single relatively small city taking on state law, the incinerator industry, garbage collection industry, and thirteen other neighboring cities in that fight. While we were often called nimby's, not in my backyard, the reason that our plan worked was not only that we didn't want it in our city, we didn't want it in any city. And that was the goal that Hugh and the attack team took on. Hugh practically lived in Lansing for a while as we used a lobbyist to get to know the lay of the land. Either Hugh, or Larry, or myself, or all three of us were at countless meetings of the solid waste, county solid waste board, the county commission, state house committee meetings, MDEQ meetings, state senate committee meetings, until finally, a fine young man by the name of Senator Mike Bouchard was the one that actually implemented the change in law, of course with Hugh on his shoulder the whole time. Hugh, as indicated in your documentary there, still had to go before the US Sixth Circuit Court in Cincinnati. He was the one that also coined the imaginary and creative term when SACRA wanted to open an industrial recycling plant there. He argued that a giant iron stomper would shake the ground as metal and iron were ground and bent less than three hundred feet from schools and homes. Of course, there is no such thing, but nonetheless, the court loved the terminology and ruled in our favor. Citizens of Madison Heights may not be aware, but they can thank Hugh Thomas as the lead in the attack team for providing cleaner air, less smell, less nuisance to our neighborhoods and those of other cities that have been affected. I'm sure many people are happy that the Detroit incinerator is finally closed thirty years after the one in Madison Heights. So Hugh Thomas, nice job, buddy.
Allow us to move on, but thank you for your service. The next presentation tonight is a 2019 Police Officers Memorial Week proclamation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, the proclamation calls upon the citizens of Madison Heights and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe May the 12th through the 18th of 2019 as Police Week to commemorate police officers, past and present, who have by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so have established for themselves an admirable and enduring reputation of preserving rights and securities for all citizens. Council will be proclaiming May the 15th of 2019 to be observed as Police Officer Memorial Day in honor of those police officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives and have become disabled in the performance of duty. And Officer Robert Backlund is here today to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Police Department.
All right, the next presentation are the Police Commendation Awards, which will be presented by Police Chief Cory Haynes. Chief Haynes, the floor is yours.
Mayor Hartwell, esteemed council members, tonight the Madison Heights Police Department will recognize police officers, police service aides, volunteers in the police reserve officer program, and two citizens for their actions during 2018. I would like to begin tonight by recognizing the Police Officer of the Year for 2018. The Police Officer of the Year and Police Service Aid of the Year awards are awarded to any police officer or police service aide who has, as a result of diligence and their outstanding efforts, been singled out as the department's Member of the Year in their respective rank. For 2018, the Police Officer of the Year is Officer Robert Backlund. Officer Robert Backlund began his career with the Madison Heights Police Department on October 20th of 1997. Officer Backlund serves as a patrol officer, a field training officer, a background investigator, and a bicycle officer. Officer Backlund has repeatedly trained new officers several months at a time with no break in between, and has consistently maintained a positive work ethic and is always willing to go above and beyond. Officer Backlund has been instrumental in the successful training of our police officers. In 2018, Officer Backlund also dealt with a very dangerous situation involving a man with a shotgun at a local apartment complex. Officer Backlund, while also training a new hiry, was able to use his extensive knowledge and abilities as a police officer to speak with this armed subject, who was initially not complying with any direction, and talk him into surrendering peacefully without having to use any type of further force. During this entire incident, Officer Backlund used his skills to diffuse the situation while maintaining officer safety and safety for the public. Officer Backlund's positive attitude, calm demeanor, exceptional knowledge make him an undeniable asset to the Madison Heights Police Department and to the citizens of the City of Madison Heights. It is with great pride that I announce him as the 2018 Police Officer of the Year.
Congratulations.
The Police Service Aid of the Year for 2018 is Police Service Aid Keisha Williams. Police Service Aid Keisha Williams began her position with the Madison Heights Police Department on September 20th of 2017, and came to our Police Department with over twenty years of experience as both a dispatcher and a manager. Over the short time period that PSA Williams was here, she's proven herself to be a leader and an invaluable resource to the Madison Heights Police Department. Keisha's performance has always been above and beyond what is expected of any employee. Keisha has influenced and helped change our policy on lean operations, was a driving force in streamlining our stolen vehicle and stolen license plate files. Keisha also streamlined our record-keeping process for vehicles that have been repossessed. Keisha has always conducted herself in a calm and professional manner and is always there to answer questions from less experienced and some more experienced police service aides. Keisha has been an invaluable asset to the Madison Heights Police Department and to all the citizens of Madison Heights. Keisha has recently accepted a management position with another police department in Oakland County, where I'm sure she will excel and become a future great leader for that department. Keisha's positive attitude, her vast knowledge, her compassion, and her passion for helping others, and her great leadership will be greatly missed. It is with great pride that I announce Service Aid Keisha Williams is our 2018 Police Service Aid of the Year.
Congratulations.
The Reserve Unit currently consists of sixteen Reserve Officers, which will soon to be seventeen after a swearing-in that will take place a little bit later. Those closely screened officers complete a hundred and twenty-five hour Police Reserve Academy and then receive additional training by riding with experienced Reserve Officers. The primary functions of the Reserve Unit include assisting sworn officers when requested, checking vacation homes, patrolling schools and parks, conducting crowd and traffic control at city and school events, and delivering subpoenas for the department's detective bureau. The Reserve Officer for 2018 of the Year is Steve Goluski. Police Officer Steve Goluski was selected to be the Police Reserve Officer of the Year for 2018 by his peers. Reserve Officer Goluski began his career in the Police Reserves in April of 2016. In June of 2016, he became a platoon leader and the training coordinator for the Reserve Officer Program. Reserve Officer Goluski is also one of our police service aides and works many hours answering the calls of those in need of police assistance. Reserve Officer Goluski has also spent many hours patrolling the City of Madison Heights with an emphasis on the schools and parks, and has also assisted with special details such as the Memorial Day Parade, the festival in the park, high school football and basketball games. It is with deep appreciation that I announce Steve Goluski as the 2018 Police Reserve Officer of the Year. Congratulations. The next few awards are going to be life-saving awards. This commendation may be awarded to any member whose actions are directly responsible for the saving of a human life. These actions must lead to the prolonging of a life to the extent that the victim was released alive into the care of a medical authority who then assumed responsibility. The first award will go to Officer Bruce Vo. On March 8th, 2018, Madison Heights Police Officers were dispatched to the area of East Heights Drive west of Dequindre for a vehicle that was facing the wrong direction on East Heights Drive. Upon their arrival, the officers found a green Chevrolet Tahoe in the left lane of East Heights Drive facing westbound. A male was inside the vehicle in the passenger seat, and no one was in the driver's seat. The vehicle was running with the headlights on and the left turning signal activated. The male was unresponsive, I'm sorry, unresponsive, had an extremely faint pulse, and the pupils of his eyes were the size of pinpoints, as described by the officers. Officers believed that the male had potentially overdosed on opioids. Officer Vo administered his department-issued Narcan with the assistance of another officer, and after the male was administered the Narcan and before the fire department had arrived unseen, the male began to move around, became conscious, and began responding to the officers. The male was subsequently transported to the hospital for further medical treatment. I am very proud to award Officer Bruce Vo with a life-saving award for this incident. Next life-saving award will be given to Officer Robert Backlund, a name we've heard a couple times already this evening. On March 20th of 2018, officers were dispatched to a location on East 12 Mile Road on the report of a male subject who was unresponsive and turning blue. Upon arrival, officers located the male subject and found that he had a very weak pulse and very labored breathing. Officer Backlund, believing that this was an opioid overdose situation, administered his department-issued Narcan to the male subject. Upon arriving at the fire department, a second dose of Narcan was given to the male subject. Male subject then began to regain consciousness and began breathing again, and a pulse was strong. He was then transported to St. John's Hospital for further medical treatment. Very proud to award Officer Backlund with a life-saving award for this incident. Next award for life-saving award is Officer Ian Howard. On April 15th, 2018, officers were dispatched to an address on 13 Mile Road to assist the fire department. Officers arrived unseen and entered the residence, and on the second floor, officers located a male that was gasping for air, and his face was completely purple from an apparent lack of oxygen. The family advised the officer that the male was an active heroin user. Officer Howard administered his department-issued Narcan, and the male was given a second dose by the fire department upon their arrival. The male then began breathing normally, and the color returned to his face, and he was able to speak with the officers at the residence prior to being transported to St. John's Hospital for further medical treatment. I am very proud to award Officer Ian Howard with a life-saving award.
Congratulations.
Next life-saving award will go to Officer Stephen Emilewski. On June 19th, 2018, Madison Heights Police Officers were dispatched to a local hotel in Madison Heights for a reported drug overdose. Upon arrival to the room, officers observed a witness performing CPR chest compressions on the suspected overdose subject. Officer Emilewski immediately verified that the overdose subject had a weak pulse, irregular breathing, was sweating profusely, and turning blue. Officer Emilewski administered his department-issued Narcan to the overdose subject. Soon after the Madison Heights Fire Department arrived unseen and assisted Officer Emilewski by administering a second dose of Narcan. As they were administering the second dose, the subject gained consciousness and became responsive and spoke with the officers. The subject was then transported to the hospital for further treatment. Very proud to award Officer Stephen Emilewski with a life-saving award for this incident. On October 30th, 2018, Madison Heights Police Officer Trier was on patrol and observed a white Chevrolet Blazer with a defective headlight on John Aronier 10 Mile Road. Officer Trier observed the vehicle swerving back and forth in the travel lane and initiated a traffic stop at 10 Mile and Cousins. As Officer Trier approached the vehicle, he heard screaming from someone inside the vehicle about someone having a possible overdose. Officer Trier observed a male passenger in the vehicle who was unconscious, had very labored breathing, and his face was turning blue. The other passengers informed Officer Trier that the male had used heroin mixed with fentanyl. Officer Trier called for the Madison Heights Fire Rescue and administered his department-issued Narcan to the unconscious male. The male then began breathing easier, and the color in his face began to return to normal as he was starting to speak. The male was then transported to St. John's Hospital for further medical treatment. Very proud to award Officer Kevin Trier with a life-saving award for this incident.
Congratulations.
The last life-saving award should go to Sergeant David Kohler and Officer Edgar Miranda. On January 31st of 2019, we crossed the Order of the Year because it was so close to our meeting time, we decided to give these awards at this event. The officers were dispatched to an address in Madison Heights for a possible drug overdose. Upon the officer's arrival, they located a female, a subject that was not breathing, and the female's mother was starting to perform CPR. Officer Miranda took over CPR, while Sergeant Kohler prepared to use his department-issued Narcan on the female. Sergeant Kohler administered the Narcan to the female while Officer Miranda continued CPR. Officer Miranda again checked for a pulse and breathing with negative results. Officer Miranda continued with CPR, and Sergeant Kohler administered a second Narcan dose to the female. The fire department arrived unseen, and Sergeant Kohler and Officer Miranda moved the female to the front room for easier access by the fire department. The fire department took over CPR, and almost immediately the female began breathing and became conscious. I am very proud to award both Sergeant David Kohler and Officer Edgar Miranda with life-saving awards for this incident.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'm just going to read this, we won't present the award, but the next two are citizen awards. This commendation may be awarded to any individual whose actions resulted in the apprehension of criminals, a life-saving act, or actions that greatly assist the department in combating crime. In April of 2018, Aiden Johnson and three other young men were in the City of Madison Heights at Rosie's Park when they witnessed a male assaulting a woman. Aiden and his friends began yelling at the male, which diverted the man's attention away from assaulting the woman, and rather focused him on these young men. Aiden then used assault and 911 to report the assault. The police arrived unseen, and the male was taken into custody for felony domestic violence third offense. Further, Aiden testified in court as to what he had witnessed that day in the park. Because of his quick actions and his willingness to get involved, the victim in this case most likely suffered much less serious injuries. It was later discovered that the victim was also five months pregnant at the time of this incident, and if the assault had continued, there could have been serious injuries to the unborn child. The Police Department's Commendation Board has voted to award Aiden Johnson with a plaque for our appreciation for his actions during and after this incident, and I am proud to award Aiden Johnson for his actions during that incident. And the last award tonight is for David Hurley. On November 21st, 2018, David Hurley was inside the Hollywood Market located at 29200 Campbell Road in the City of Madison Heights. Mr. Hurley and another gentleman observed a bank robbery in progress at Chase Bank located inside the Hollywood Market. As the suspect fled the building and entered the parking lot, Mr. Hurley and the other gentleman disregarded their own safety and ran after the suspect. Mr. Hurley and the other gentleman caught up with the suspect as he was getting into his getaway vehicle. The suspect entered the vehicle and shut the door, but Mr. Hurley was able to get the door back open, and the other gentleman reached in and took the stolen money away from the suspect. Although the suspect got away that night, the suspect was later captured the following day and was arrested on two counts of bank robbery, one count of fleeing and eluding police in McComb County, several additional crimes in Wayne County including felony murder. The suspect was later sentenced, already pled guilty, and received three to twenty-five years in prison just on the bank robberies. Because of Mr. Hurley's observations, his quick actions, description of the suspect and the suspect vehicle, this information was able to be immediately released to the news media, which resulted in the tip that led to the arrest of the suspect the following day. I am very proud to award Mr. Hurley for his actions during this incident.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Mayor Hartwell and members of council, thank you for your time and for allowing the Police Department to honor its employees, volunteers, and citizens for their actions and dedication to our community.
Thank you, Chief Haynes.
Thank you, Chief Haynes.
Thank you, we can continue on in the presentations. We have the oath of office for a police reserve officer. Is the clerk handling this? All right, Chief Haynes?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you again. It is a great pleasure that I present to you William Anderson to be sworn in tonight as the next Madison Heights Police Reserve Officer. Mr. Anderson has been a resident of Madison Heights for approximately one year. He was born in Buffalo, New York, and also lived in London, England for approximately four years. He is currently employed as a contract specialist for the U.S. Army. In his time off, he enjoys photography, boxing, and camping. Mr. Anderson wishes to become a police reserve officer so that he can give back to the community that supports a safe, happy, and successful environment where he resides. I will now ask Mr. Anderson to be sworn in by the Madison Heights City Clerk's assurance.
I am William Anderson, and I am a citizen of the United States, and I am a constitutional citizen of the United States, and in charge of the city of Madison Heights. I am a resident of the state of Kansas, and I am a citizen of Madison Heights, and I am a resident of the city of Madison Heights. I am a resident of the state of Kansas, and I am a citizen of the United States, and in charge of the city of Madison Heights. I welcome the state of Kansas, and I am a citizen of the United States, and I am a resident of the city of Madison Heights. I welcome the state of Kansas, and I am a citizen of the United States, and I am a resident of the city of Madison Heights. I welcome the state of Kansas, and I am a citizen of the United States, and I am a resident of the city of Madison Heights.
Thank you, Chief Haynes, welcome Reserve Officer Anderson to the force. The next presentation this evening is the two thousand and nineteen National Public Works Week proclamation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
The city council is proclaiming the week of May the nineteenth through the twenty-fifth as National Public Works Week. This proclamation recognizes the hard work performed by the men and women of our Department of Public Services and the contribution these employees make every day to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of our residents. This year's theme is "It Starts Here," and we encourage our residents to become acquainted, to acquaint themselves with our dedicated public works professionals of Madison Heights. Cory Almas, the interim DPS Director, is accepting the proclamation on behalf of the department.
Cory, will you? That finishes the presentations this evening, so there's a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget resolution and tax levy. Let's see, do you have a report before we do the public hearing for the budget?
Yes. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget workshop was held on May the twenty-ninth. This public hearing was, is scheduled to receive public comments on that proposed budget, to appropriate funds, to establish the tax levy for the budget appropriations, and to approve changes to department fees. Pursuant to Section eight point four of the city charter, a resolution has been drafted, which if approved, will adopt the fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget, appropriate the funds, levy the property tax, and approve several fee adjustments. Following this public hearing, staff and I recommend that council approve this budget resolution, and it would require five votes of council.
Okay, I open a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the two thousand and twenty budget resolution and tax levy. This is a public hearing for the budget resolution and tax levy. Would anyone like to speak during this public hearing for the budget and the tax levy? No one has asked to be recognized to speak for the public hearing on the budget resolution and tax levy, so I will close the public hearing. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council adopt the proposed two thousand and twenty budget resolution, the attached fee schedule, and the tax levy as indicated for the two thousand and twenty fiscal year.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilmember Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt the two thousand and twenty budget resolution, the attached fee schedule, and tax levy. Is there discussion from council?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just one note for those who weren't here during our budget workshop, and I do see a few faces who were. One of the things that we do on councils, we go through every single line item within this budget, so before we ever vote on anything, we want to make sure that we have an understanding of every line item, every dollar that's spent. And so, one of the, one of the things that we were able to do is identify about nine thousand dollars of budgeted savings through that line item discussion that will now be sent to our quality of life boards for suggestions on how to spend that budget savings. So, our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Environmental Committee, Arts Board, Active Adult Center Board, and the Library Advisory Board will have the opportunity to submit those projects to us over the next couple of months. And so, I'm really excited about that, it's gonna be a fun initiative, very similar to what we've done in the past with the council goals. This is a small dollar amount, but for quality of life projects, a small dollar amount makes a big impact on our residents' day-to-day lives. So, really excited about that, and just wanted to bring that to the attention for anybody who wasn't here during the line item review.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bliss. This needs to go in the headlines, it's really remarkable. City council, it's not just every dollar, it's every penny. I mean, tens and tens of millions of dollars, and we review every expenditure that is anticipated over the next twelve months. We also do longer-term planning with our capital improvement plan, but the headline is of all the city taxes, you know, general operating, senior millage, library millage, all of them, every single millage will be reduced this year. That's a remarkable accomplishment for the city council, the new city manager, and Linda Kunitz, the new finance director, and all of the staff. I mean, that, that bears repeating and bears publicizing that every single city millage is going down this year. So, I think that's a remarkable feat, and I want to thank staff and city council and the residents who participated in our budget workshops over the last several months. Are there other comments from city council? Okay, thank you, let's vote. This is for the budget resolution, fee schedule, and tax levy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Is there anything on the agenda that anyone wants to be brought forward right now?
Your honor?
Yeah, Mayor Protem Bliss?
I'd like to tackle the line items under G ordinances and H unfinished business. I think those would be of value to the audience numbers.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. Let's go to item G one, it's ordinance number twenty-one thirty-eight, the first reading of the noxious weeds ordinance. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
For the rest, per the request of Councilor Grafstein at the council meeting of January the fourteenth, city council is requested to consider the proposed ordinance amendment that amends Chapter twenty-seven, Article two, Section twenty-seven through sixteen through twenty-seven thirty-three of the Madison Heights Code of Ordinances regarding noxious weeds. These proposed changes were reviewed and commented on by members of the Environmental Citizens Committee, the Clinton River Watershed, and the Oakland County Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area. The proposed changes update the definition of noxious weeds, delete future reference to specified plants instead of referencing the Michigan Invasive Species Watch List. Other changes were to include and encourage native plantings and natural planned landscaping and guidelines to control weeds. There also is a change that'll be made before second reading, changing the seven-day period that a resident would have to get rid of the weeds down to three, which is in line with our recently adopted code enforcement policy. So, staff and I recommend that council adopt the proposed ordinance amendment on first reading.
Thank you, what's the wish of city council?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Grafstein?
I would recommend that council adopt the ordinance, the amendment to ordinance five-seven-one, the noxious weed ordinance on first reading.
Thank you, what's the ordinance number? Can you repeat that?
Five-seven-one.
The new one's two-one-three.
Two-one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're changing the number.
The ordinance two-one-three-eight.
Okay, thank you, is there support?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilor Grafstein, supported by Mayor Protem Bliss, to adopt on first reading ordinance number twenty-one thirty-eight, noxious weeds. Is there discussion on this item? Thank you, Councilor Grafstein, for getting this through. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. There's also asked to bring forward item G two, it's ordinance number twenty-one forty, the first reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report on G two?
Yes, G two relates to fireworks. In accordance with the request of Councilman Corbett at the council meeting of February the eleventh, city council is requested to consider the proposed ordinance amendment that amends Section twelve dash seventy-two of the Madison Heights Code of Ordinances regarding the permitted days and times for fireworks. In December of two thousand and eighteen, House Bill five-nine-four-zero was introduced and allow municipalities more ability to regulate the days and times that consumer fireworks were ignited, discharged, and used. The new state law allows municipalities to enact an ordinance that prohibit, prohibits the ignition, charge, and use of consumer fireworks except on the following days after eleven a.m., December thirty-first until one a.m. on January the first, the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day until eleven forty-five p.m. on each of those days, June the twenty-ninth to July the fourth until eleven forty-five p.m. on each of those days, July the fifth, if that day falls on a Friday or Saturday only until eleven forty-five p.m., the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day until eleven forty-five p.m. on each of those days. In addition, the newly enacted state law requires that if a municipality enacts the new day and time restrictions under the new state law, that the local ordinance shall also require a one thousand dollar fee for each violation. This proposed amendment adopts the newly enacted language under state law that would prohibit the use of discharge of consumer fireworks in the city on all days except for those dates and times preempted by the new state law as outlined above. The proposed amendment also incorporates the mandatory penalty provisions as required by the new state law. Staff, the city attorney's office, and I recommend that council adopt this proposed ordinance amendment on the first reading.
Thank you, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council adopt on first reading ordinance twenty-one forty regarding the discharge of consumer fireworks.
Very well, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilmember Corbett, seconded by Councilmember Gettings, to adopt on first reading ordinance number twenty-one forty regarding the discharge of consumer fireworks. We'll open discussion, and Mr. Corbett, thank you for bringing this to us, our attention as soon as the legislature acted. Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
Just a couple of items of clarification. I was not crazy about the one thousand dollar fine for each violation. My point only being, a thousand bucks is, is a little on the high side, however, well, I know if you're being woke up and you got the kids, I got it, but that's not discretionary. The legislature indicates if you adopt the modifications, then you've got to adopt it all, including the one thousand dollars. There is a certain discretionary ability, though, with the police officers, who would presumably be responding and issuing the tickets. So, if you end up getting a thousand dollar fine, it's probably because you were told a few times and just decided to let the liquor do the firing off of the fireworks, or whatever it was that was motivating you. By way of history, some years ago, the legislature found itself in the state short of money, and somebody got the idea of taxing fireworks would be the way to, allowing the sale of fireworks and then taxing the heck out of it and derive that money. That was made by the folks who live, who live and work in Lansing and not the ones who are down here. There was no provision to allow the local police departments and the, the local enforcement agencies, the city attorney and so on, any, any ability to get control of it, and the thing went crazy. I don't have to tell anybody in this room, if you've lived anywhere in the state of Michigan over the last four years, or whatever amount of time it is, things just got completely out of hand. You've got people firing off fireworks for the most obscure holidays, and they're perfectly legal. I've got no problem with the Fourth of July in reasonable use, but one-thirty in the morning or eleven forty-five at night in neighborhoods where you've got children and elderly, that's ridiculous. So, I think this is a reasonable constraint that still allows people to, to enjoy that kind of thing if that's how they care to spend their money. But on the other hand, it, it, my, my impression of the thing is, if you allow a little bit, then folks will always go a little bit more. So, hopefully, we're, we're closing that, that gap a little bit now, and, because, you know, starting about the middle of June, my, my office in the, the city gets starting to be inundated. I can't believe there's anybody at council who somebody hasn't, had somebody complain to them about the nonsense that goes on, especially over the Fourth of July. Anyway, I'm being played out, so I'll, I'll end it now. Thank you very much. Very good.
Other discussion from city council?
Your honor?
Yes, please.
I, I'm really, I'm really happy that we're bringing forward these changes, and I'm thrilled that the, the state finally afforded us the ability to do this. I think this law, or the law to allow for residential fireworks, I think makes a lot more sense in communities where you don't have as densely populated dwellings as we do. Everybody talks about the noise issue, I've got three young kids and a dog who hates fireworks, so I, I live it, I, I understand the, the inconvenience of it all, but the other side of the equation is, if there's fireworks being shot off like twenty feet away from my house, that's dangerous. And so, our ability to further regulate it, I'm, I'm thrilled that we have this opportunity. I'm thankful for Councilman Corbett for bringing it up the second that the state allowed us to regulate this, and what I'd like to see between now and the second reading, I'd like to see how we're going to play out enforcement, at least during this key time with the Fourth of July coming up. I am very cognizant of the safety issue, and I want to make sure that during the time, we're still making sure that the proper precautions are being taken as afforded in the law, and I want to make sure that right when you're getting up to that eleven forty-five mark, we do have patrols in the street that is limiting that, because the later it goes, the more likely that, the more likely that precautions are potentially going out the window, and safety becomes more and more an issue, not just for the people firing it off, but for the neighbors who are at home trying to sleep and don't want to be woken up, not just by the noise, but by a fire on their property.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I believe there was a report from the police chief that, that initially supported this proposal a while back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more interested in, in staffing and how we're going to strategically tackle this, knowing that key prime time for fireworks is coming up.
Yeah, to add to the variety of reasons why this is important, to reduce the discharge of these large fireworks in our city, in addition to its annoying and disruptive to raising our families, and the danger to our-
precedent it sets for any long-term contract that we ever set with any vendor in our city, who could come back and ask for the same deal, including ones that are currently under contract right now, who will see this meeting, who will have access to the minutes, to the YouTube video, and they could come back and ask the same thing. I don't like this precedent. I don't like taking taxpayer dollars and awarding it to a vendor that is currently under contract. All it tells me is we executed a great contract originally, and they have to honor that, just as we would have to if it was on the other foot. If we executed a, if we executed a bad contract, we'd be stuck with it right now. I think we need to afford them the same opportunity to be stuck with a bad contract, because it's great for our residents.
Yeah, I, I'm, uh, thank you, Mr. Bliss. I'm, I'm troubled by a contractor asking to back out of a, a deal that, that they authored and agreed to. I am concerned about the presidential value that sets to other contractors who think they can renegotiate midterm. But there's just, I'm worried about if, if we scare them away forever. You know, if this completely sours the relationship and we can't find another contractor in the market at these rates, or rates similar to what they want to amend. And so that's like a hypothetical. I, I don't have the answer to. I mean, on one hand, I could think, all right, if, if we deny the contract amendment, what if they just close up shop and, you know, just of course refuse to do the work for us, which would give us an opportunity to rebid this on the open market. Maybe they'll come right back to us and offer the exact same rates, and maybe they win it, or maybe they don't. And then it's the next best company, which, which is higher. And that, that's a hypothetical. There's too many uncertainties in that. So as much as like I, I believe in the principle of, of being up, held to your promises, because of course you're right, we, the city would be forced to uphold a bad contract. I'm just so uncertain about what the rebid process would look like. And that, that's, I'm troubled. I, I'm just curious on what some other thoughts are.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, could I ask, I'd, I'd like to get a little information on the record. Corey, can I, can I bother you for a minute?
Please, welcome, Corey Elmas.
Corey is the acting DPS director and the walking genius on this. Can you discuss with us the, what you found about current rates for the contract, for contracts like this? What the numbers we've got now are and how they compare?
Well, uh, what I've, what I've found is that the 2013, the 2013 unit price per cubic yard for concrete was about $73 per cubic yard in 2013. And at the time, the cost of concrete was going up maybe 50 cents to $2 at most. Today's unit price per yard of concrete is $118.
Mm-hmm. And this contract calls for, I'm sorry, don't remember. I looked at it four times in the last, what, what's the number now? 118?
For the, with the contractor.
Yeah, if, if we agreed with the, uh...
Yeah, the, the, um, unit price per square foot, if you...
Yeah.
To do the calculations with, with the contractor. Let me pull this up here. Just give me a second.
Yeah, I just went through the same thing and I couldn't spot it quick.
The, for eight-inch concrete, the, the contractor's unit price per square foot is $5.09 per square yard.
So where does that fall between the 2013 rates and the current market?
I'm sorry, I, I could do the math for you and get back to you. I don't have that off the top of my head, how it correlates per square yard.
You got a sense of that, Jeff? Okay. I, um, all right. I thought it was a little to the high point of the middle, and I, that was just my, but I don't want to swear to that. The other thing, um, while you're there, see, my first reaction when the mayor pro tem brought this up last meeting, my first reaction was, well, there's probably a re-opener clause in the contract. Isn't, isn't that usual? Not usual, isn't that, uh, yeah, I'm gonna switch you off the, doesn't that occur quite often, and it's missing here?
Well, just for the record, Mr. Mayor, as indicated by, by the city manager, Italia does not have a legal right to increase.
That's not my question, Jeff.
Yeah, your, your question is, is there an opener? The addendum that I drafted is only for one year. There is no opener. In other words, in our prior contract in 2001, each party had a right at that point to accept the next year's contract. When we entered into an eight-year contract with them, there was no opener. Now, the addendum that I drafted, that is for council's consideration, would revert to an opener. So what you're being asked to approve really is a one-year deal, which you can then revisit next year. So that's what the addendum provides. That's what Italia has agreed to. So are they, are they, if they don't perform, would they be in breach? Yes, they would be in breach, but I'm concerned about the city shooting itself in the proverbial foot, because if we go out to, to bid, the cost that we're gonna pay is gonna be significantly higher. We'll end up suing Italia. There'll be costly litigation for both sides.
I, I got, yeah, okay, I got all that. Um, let me just save us the drive time here. Did their attorney fail to include an opener clause in this contract, which he probably, or she should probably have?
Well, I can't speak for, for their attorney as to whether...
Isn't it typical? If you're gonna have a 10-year contract, there's gonna be a reopening, usually.
We, on the first round, we had a opener.
Not that we want it, but that they want.
On the first round, both of us had. We could approve it, and they could approve it. On, on the eight-year contract, there was no opener.
That was the extension, or the...
Yeah, the extension, there was no re-opener. And so what we're doing here by virtue of this addendum, what the mayor pro tem bliss said is valid. The only question is, is does it make sense economically for the city to do this? And what we're doing with the addendum is going back to the opener, but it's our opener, not their opener. In other words, if you read the addendum, the city council has the right to say, we're going back out to the market. So what you're really approving here is a one-year deal. Italia has no right to say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna perform for that amount.
Well, I'm, you know, I've approved many of these over the years, and it just seems to me that, um, that on the extension of eight years, they had full knowledge that they were not including an opener clause into the contract, and that if they were, you know, if, if it was significant, uh, they should have included it.
You're, you're right, they should have, and they would, they will be in breach.
I mean, it's amusing that we put an opener clause in there, because, you know, what are the odds the cost would ever go down? But, um, it sounds to me like they screwed up, and, or, or didn't fully calculate the, the future cost.
You're right, but, but the city of Madison Heights shouldn't then be penalized with the, uh, going out to sue them, number one, and number N.
Well, I don't consider it serving our rights to being penalized.
Well, I, I understand that. I think there's some very valid points. The question is, it's an economic decision. And, and sometimes the legal department has to say that the decision should be made on, we've had a long relationship with Italia.
Yeah, no, no, and I get that.
They've done a very fine job for us, as indicated in the addendum.
Trust me, I understand life isn't fair, but, uh, again, I, I, you know, the, Mark's comments have merit here.
They do. The only question is whether they're economically, uh, we wanna make it go a different route. That's the only question.
I want to explore, um, the letter from the vice, one of the vice presidents of Italia. It was included in the agenda packet, and the vice president of Italia said they've operated at a loss for the last three years, working for Madison Heights. That's remarkable. First of all, I, I wonder if that's true. A contractor has been operating in our city for three years at a economic, or a financial loss. Those were his words. Is there any, is there any merit to that statement? I mean, that's just a shocking admission. That's incredible to me. Do you have any insight whether Italia has truly been operating at a financial loss in our city for three years? Is there any way to prove that?
Well, I mean, we could ask them for the documentation for it, but they do, does indicate, they do indicate that the cost of cement and labor and all of those things are, have, have gone to such, to such an extent that they can't comply with prices from 2001. Now, that's the, those are the unit prices from 2001. So those prices are, were they foolish for agreeing to 2001 prices? Yes, they probably were. But in the final analysis, the council's gotta make a decision. Do we sue them and try to collect against them, which we might be able to, or do we save the money and grant them their one-time, uh, one-time increase, and that grant would only be on a year-to-year basis, because in the addendum, which they agreed to, I put in an opener for the city.
Your honor? I, I, one follow-up question. Um, have, has cement already been ordered for this project? Have we already passed that point where they're committed to the year 2019, or?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I think the answer is no, this project doesn't happen until later in the summer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bliss.
Your honor, just, just to add to the discussion, I, I think we should not give the proverbial get-out-of-jail-free card to a contractor who signed a bad deal for their private company at the expense of our taxpayers, especially since we don't even know if they're gonna go into breach yet. You know, we're proactively cleaning up their mess, and I don't want to be in the, the, I, I don't want to be in service to our vendors. Our vendors need to be in service to our residents. And taking that taxpayer dollars and switching it over just because they executed a bad deal, I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's good government, and it's certainly not a precedent we need, we wanna set. If they do breach as part of some sort of legal settlement, maybe at that time, we come up with some sort of negotiated deal with our legal team. But why would we pro, why would we preempt that? Why would we jump ahead of them going into full breach? If they've been operating at a loss, it's because they don't want the publicity of breaching a contract with one of probably their, one of their longest customers in the city of Madison Heights. There's a huge publicity fallout for that. So why would we wanna help them? You know, this is a private company who executed the deal with their attorneys. Our attorneys did a phenomenal job. I want to applaud them for that. But why are we gonna help them out? Somebody please tell me. I, I get the economics of it, but there's more economics on their side not to breach this contract that we're not even paying attention to. Not in this discussion, as of yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just wanna, to go back to something you said, Jeff, let's not change the fact set here. In 2001, when they initiated the original agreement, they did have an opener clause, as I understand it.
Yes, well, well, you indicated they weren't able to honor 2001 prices. Well, they had an opener to protect them against that, at least in part. Their problem was is that they really couldn't extend it nine through 18 years, whatever. They couldn't, they didn't fill in.
Well, they extended it until 2014.
Yeah.
So they, we kept renewing it on a year-to-year basis.
So the eight years goes from there to 22.
From 2014, they ended it, we entered into an eight-year deal, and it didn't have an opener. Otherwise, they would have informed us, we need to open it and increase the...
Please, ladies and gentlemen, I, I can't hear the report.
However, I mean, the only, I guess the only reason that you'd wanna reopen it is because, A, we've had a long-term relationship with them. They've done a very fine job, and we do have a project that is going to be scheduled to get started later in the summer. So, and then, of course, the economic aspect of it.
Okay. Well, here, here's the, on, uh, Mr. Mayor, here's the thing, though. We don't really know at this moment whether or not the negotiated amount, where it sits relative to the current market price. Now, I have, I have no problem, as a matter of fact, I have a lot of respect for Italia. They're a good company. They've done great work for us, and I don't necessarily want to chase them out of town, but I also don't want to chase the, the taxpayers' money down the, the thing either. I would be willing to offer a substitute motion to authorize the administration to reopen negotiations with Italia, and that the council, and that they submit a revised agreement or consideration, number one. Number two, I would also like to have the rest of the economics fleshed out. In other words, I'd like to know exactly, I mean, if, if the deal, if the, if the amount that we would raise them to just simply takes us to the market, then what the heck? We might as well just go to bid then.
It's my understanding, though, based upon the research.
That's my understanding, too, but, but Corey didn't have the numbers, and I'd like to know that before we sign a deal. So that would be my motion, if it's clear enough, sir.
Right. I mean, the first day of business school says that private firms are profit-seeking. They want contracts. They want to make a profit. So that's why I'm incredible that this company claims to have operated at a financial loss for three years. That's historic. However, I, if they are forced to rebid, they're gonna want to win the contract. We know what their prices should be.
No disrespect, Mr. Mayor, I do have a motion in front of you to, to either...
Oh, that's right, a substitute motion.
Yes.
Reopen negotiations, submit a revised agreement, amended, proposed amended agreement, and to provide council with more of the economics.
Yes.
Those are the three points. That was a, a substitute motion from Councilman Corbett. Is there support for the substitute motion? Support for the substitute motion?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I thought it was interesting. Okay, so we're back to the motion on the, uh, table, and that was the move to deny the contract amendment.
Your honor?
Yeah, I, I, I'm a little bit worried if they want to hold a grudge against us and not offer the same rates or not do business with us, but if they are a rational actor in the marketplace, they shall be profit-seeking and shall offer those same rates, and we'll be right back where we are. So I'm, I'm willing to say a contract is a contract and hold them to it. Other discussion from council on, on the motion on the table?
Yes, your honor?
Yes, sir.
Just to Councilman Corbett's point, denying this does not stop their legal team and our legal team from discussing their potential breach of contract. I, I just want that out and into the record. I mean, all, all of those things that Councilman Corbett discussed, if we deny, all of that can still happen, and it likely will happen, if they'd like to breach this contract. But we also don't know that they're going to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to know what the number is. Perhaps Mr. Elmas could provide us with that at a later date, just to give us an idea of what we're even talking about.
Other pri, other, what other cities pay for it?
Well, the cost of concrete. 2013, it was 73. 2019, it's 118. What is Italia proposing for us? You know, just where does it fall in that? And if we are looking at, if they really are working at a loss, which companies will do from time to time to save face and to keep the business in the hope that they will get business down the road. So I do believe that it is possible. I don't know if it's true or not, but I do believe it is possible. And perhaps we are going to be in a situation where we do need to work with them, but not necessarily at the prices that they are providing. So if we have a better idea of what their cost is, I would potentially look at covering their costs without the profit. If they've been working at a loss, that's better. But we don't have the information, and I feel I can't vote on this, one way or the other, when I don't know. There's not enough information here to make a vote, in my opinion.
Okay. You'll be forced to unless you want to table it again.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to say that I, I support Mayor Pro Tem on this, because based on principle, I think this is in the public's best interest. Regardless of what possible outcomes there are, we're not the Madison Heights Bank. We, you know, we did a contract, and we obligate every contract we've made. I don't think we've ever gone back on a contract. And I don't think this is a situation where we should start going back, letting vendors go back on there. So that's why I support Mayor Pro Tem and to, and void out the contract.
It's not an easy vote. You could justify a yes or a no. So I, I, there, no hard feelings either way. Everyone votes. I, I think I've heard enough of the arguments to understand both sides. Is council ready to vote? Are there any final comments? Okay. I'm gonna just ask for a roll call vote, council, if you'll allow that courtesy to me. The motion on the floor is to deny the contract amendment, to deny the contract amendment with Italia. A yes vote is to deny. A no vote is to not deny. All right? Is that clear? All right, so the clerk, will you please, uh...
Your honor?
Ask for the votes. Yes, sir.
Just a clarification to, to the attorney, though. I know at the zoning board, staff usually doesn't like motions to deny. They just assume you, you make a positive motion and vote it down, because if, if for whatever reason this motion failed, would we have to turn around and then pass an or, pass a motion specifically to approve?
Well, Councilman, Mr. Mayor? Councilman Corbett is correct. We don't like to make motions in the negative. And the essence of the motion is, is not to approve the Italia contract amendment.
But it's not exactly the same thing.
It isn't. You're right. So if there was a substitute motion to approve the contract amendment, and it was, didn't have a majority vote, then, um, then, then the amendment would not be approved. And the reasons why council would have voted against the amendment, certainly we've made a very substantial record on what those reasons are. That's the reason why you don't do it in the negative. You do it to, to approve, and if you don't like it, you make a record of it, and we certainly have here. So I think it would be cleaner if...
Well, I think, I mean...
No, I want the rhetorical device of saying deny.
Yeah, that's exactly what I assume that the pro tem is doing.
If that's the wish of council, a majority, of course.
Yes.
Which is acceptable.
Yes.
To do. Just want to clarify.
Don't you just love it?
Yeah, right?
All right. City council, this was a robust debate. Are there any final arguments on this? Okay. A yes vote is to deny. Is that clear? Okay, let's vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilman Corbett?
No.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Graffstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Sol, Soltes? Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries six to one, which means the contract amendment is denied. We can continue on the agenda. I'm gonna move forward, F1 from the interim DPS director regarding the underground storage tank replacement and fueling site improvements. We've been bringing items forward. So we're going to F1 regarding the underground storage tank. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report on this item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Approximately five years ago, the underground fuel tank at the police department was discovered to be taking on water and was substantially de, was subsequently decommissioned and removed, eliminating the gasoline fueling station at the police department and requiring all city vehicles to fuel at the DPS. During this process, staff recognized that the fuel tanks at the DPS were equally as old and nearing the end of their useful life. In order to prevent a similar failure at the DPS and eventually rehabilitate the police department fueling site, staff began phase funding these two projects through the budget process. We funded the replacement of the DPS site and the police, police department's storage tank fueling sites, based on quotes provided at that time. The DPS fueling site has been fully funded in this current year budget, and staff solicited and assist, the assistance of Energy Science, who is with us tonight, the energy management consultant, to act as the project management firm. The team prepared a request for proposal, and five vendors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting in December. Two proposals were submitted by the January deadline. The proposals received were from Oscar W. Lawrence and R.W. Mercer. Due to the process provided by both vendors, staff felt the need to perform additional due diligence. A bid clarification meeting was held with each vendor in March. Energy Sciences and staff concurred that even with the clarification, the Larson's proposal provided unclear and imprecise information, as well as a wide range of probable and unknown additional cost for the project. By comparison, the Mercer proposal much better addressed the scope of work requested by the city for this project, including realistic quantities, which would minimize the potential for any additional unforeseen expenses. A number of desired alternates were included with each proposal. However, the team recognizes that the base bid for this project is in excess of the budgeted funds. We would, however, request the inclusion of the A and B Operator Inspection Service and Certification, which is required by the State of Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. This is a service which we are already paying for on an annual basis. The team and I have thoroughly reviewed the proposals and recommendation, and recommend the Mercer proposal that provides the highest value for the cost and will provide a more comprehensive finished product to the city. As a result, staff and I recommend that council approve the proposal with R.W. Mercer Company of Redford, Michigan, for the replacement of underground storage tanks and fueling site improvements at the DPS, including the A and B Operator Inspection Service and Certification, for a total project cost of $491,493. Although this project is over budget, there are funds available and savings from the recent meter changeout program. And as I indicated, we have representatives from Energy Science here with us tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I moved that the council approve the employment of R.W. Mercer Company of Redford for the replacement of the underground storage tanks and fueling site improvements at the DPS, including the A and B Operator Inspection Services and Certification. Total cost of the project is $491,493.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Graffstein?
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Graffstein, to approve the bid award to R.W. Mercer Company of Redford, Michigan, for the replacement of underground storage tanks and fueling site improvements at the DPS, including the A and B Operator Inspection Service and Certification, for a total project cost of $491,493. Is there discussion on this item?
Your honor?
Uh, Mr. Soltes?
Just have a quick question. I'm sure who can answer it for me. Are they here, the contractors, or?
Yes.
Yes, please, yeah.
I've invited Shelley Sullivan and also Lori Katie from Energy Sciences to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Welcome to our city. Mr. Soltes?
I guess, I'm trying to read through the brief, but is there a chance there was any type of leakage, contamination with the tanks?
Not at this time. However, the existing fueling station, or fueling tanks at DPS were installed in 1991. They've got a 25-year life expectancy. We're, I think, about four years past date, past due.
So could, there possibly could be some type of corrosion?
There's no indication right now that there's any leaks in our fueling station. We wanted to get out in front of this.
Sure. And then if, but if there is, is that built into the contract, or is that gonna cost us more? If they have to do some type of, um, if there is leakage, if there is some type of pollution?
It's, any, any abatement of any contaminated fuel is, or contaminated soil is included in Mercer's unit price.
Okay.
To abate any of that, any contaminated soil.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask him if, do you know of any other cities that have, like, joint use of, uh, storage tanks? Like, possibly if we went in with Royal Oak, we're talking a half a million dollars here. Just sounds like a astronomical amount of money. And is , any other cities, you know, that ever share?
The, the city hasn't, of Madison Heights, has an, an emergency agreement with the city of Royal Oak. If our fueling site, site goes down, we can, um, access city of Royal Oaks and, and vice versa. But as far as a, um, an agreement, just as, uh, there's none that I know of. I'm not saying that there's not, but there's none that I know of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Where, where is the Royal Oak fueling station? At DPS?
Yeah, right through DPS here.
Oh, okay.
Twelve, twelve cameras.
Corner of our city, yeah.
Fairly close.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Along those lines, I know that one of the things we have talked about over the last year is working with our neighboring cities. I'm wondering if this is potentially a project that we could put on hold and see if we could do something in conjunction with Hazel Park Royal Oak, Warren. Is that, is, is this an opportunity or no?
I, I think it becomes a, a practical. We're sending, right now, we're using DPS as our fueling site for a police department, and also... and also any other city vehicles here. So to send our, any city vehicles to Hazel Park or Royal, I think that just adds to the inconvenience and time spent for our staff being out of the city. Talking about our tandem axlet dump trucks, our sweepers, all of our DPS fleet, also our police fleet, the fleet. There's a practicality standpoint there. And also, if in the event of an emergency situation, we've got generators at the DPS site, and we're in control of our own fueling system rather than relying on other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
If I may, City Manager Marsh, if I'm reading this correctly, in the other comments, it says the savings from the commercial water meter replacement program is available to cover the budget coverage, overage, excuse me, for this project? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
That's actually part of my challenge with this, and I'd love to have a better understanding from staff. So taking the water and sewer savings and applying it to this, we have an aging water infrastructure and a time where there's a lot of focus on water quality, and a lot of our discussions have been on water quality. Is this the best use of that $150,000? I won't talk about the $350,000 that we've already budgeted and we've already discussed. I understand that there's a strong use case here, but this is about $150,000 over that budget that we're taking away, that could go to potentially other programs that would make sure that we are providing clean water. So I don't know. Have we looked at alternative ways to utilize this money, or is that just the piggy bank that we went to by default here? Any staff, anybody who wants to jump in?
Well, this project is funded out of the water and sewer department, so the alternative is to postpone this for another year and do another budget phased project to it.
But for $150,000, what other options would there be for that amount? I mean, that's a significant amount of money. I mean, have we done a lot of detailed analysis prior to this hitting our desk? I assume that we have, so I'd like to know what was the runner-up thing that we are not doing because we're spending the budgeted savings here?
We did not look at other ways to spend the $150,000. No, we would just let it go back into the fund balance and use it to offset projects in the future. The alternative is to postpone this project until next year, but we've seen the prices increase already since we've been phase funding this significantly. So we didn't put it off until next year, but that's the alternative.
When would we need to know by to be able to execute on the project this year?
That would be a question for maybe, I don't know how long the contract process is good. We've delayed it.
Yeah, they gave us in their quote, 60 days.
And when was that?
That actually expired, I think, in March, I believe. We postponed it. I postponed it from the last council meeting to get more information from staff. So we've delayed it already past that 60 days.
Would another two weeks make a difference?
I'd have to check with Mercer if they're down with the prices.
Okay, because I would make a substitute motion to table this to the next council meeting. I would like to see what Councilor Graffstein suggested, some of the additional interlocal agreements that might be possible here. And I'd also like to see potential other uses for that $150,000, or really the $500,000 that Councilman Geddings brought up initially. So I move to table this for the next meeting, so we can get a little bit more research.
Okay, a substitute motion to table to the next council meeting to get a report on potential other uses. Was there another part to that?
The interlocal agreements.
Okay, other potential uses of those funds and interlocal agreements. Is there support for the substitute motion to table?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Graffstein?
Second.
I mean, there's no question, this is a very important capital investment for the city of Madison Heights. How many vehicles are in our city fleet? Maybe dozens and dozens, right? And the efficiency of having our employees, especially law enforcement and DPS, who empty their tanks quite quickly because they're serving us on the roads 24 hours a day, it's very, it's very important. Mr. Almas mentioned, you know, if there's ever a power outage and fueling, private fueling centers are closed for whatever reason, it's important that we have the ability to fuel our first responders. So of course, this is very important, and we have to act on it. So I hope we can act on it, if not tonight, at the very, very next meeting. I don't want to delay, and especially if Mr. Soltis's concerns bear fruit, that maybe this does corrode and discharge into the ground. We'd hate to see that. So let's act expeditiously. If there are no good answers, that's fine. We'll be back here to review approving this bid award without any good answers. That's fine. It's either tonight, or darn it, it better be the next meeting. Any other discussion on the substitute motion to table this matter? Okay, a motion was made. I'm going to restate the substitute motion by Mayor Pro Temblis, seconded by Councilor Graffstein, to table this bid award until the next regular city council meeting, for staff to explore other potential uses of those funds, the savings funds, and to explore potential interlocal agreements for this underground storage tank, or to use others. We're voting now. So all in favor to table, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to table, say no. Were there any noes?
I didn't hear it.
Okay. Motion carries to table. All right, Corey, you're excused for the rest of the night. We're going to...
Yeah, but...
Your honor, I think we should go into open comments.
They're open to the public. Yep, we're going to go back to our regularly scheduled meeting. Yeah, Department Head, you're free, you're excused, of course. You don't need to hear that from me ever. All right, the next item on the agenda is meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for public to address any subject to City Council. I ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. At three minutes, I'll ask that you end and ask the next person to speak. If you please give us your name, address, and any affiliation, that would be appreciated. So we'll begin. Meeting is open to the public. Welcome, ma'am, your name?
Dolores Moore. I actually live in Roseville, Michigan, but I actually have an office here in Madison Heights, and I work out of Madison Heights.
Right.
All right. The Boomer case is a civil case. It has GZ case numbers, which is general civil, which is same thing within the curfew of the council. Let Boomer go home to Justin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Your name and address?
Michael, and from Royal Oak.
Your last name, I didn't catch it.
Okovin.
Welcome.
Thank you. Counsel elected Sherman Law Firm is not. Let Boomer go home to Justin his daddy. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Good evening, your name and address?
Good evening, Carolyn Roberts, Warren.
Welcome.
The vet for Boomer testified in court that the culprit would have blood on its muzzle. There was no blood on Boomer. Let Boomer go home to his daddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
John Judge, Royal Oak, the first city council meeting I've been to in this city. And I have to tell you, you're all up here talking about money. And I read when you got elected, Mr. Hartwell, your resume online about helping the elderly, helping the veterans. And if you think about the money that has been spent on attorney fees and everything else that's gone on with this campaign, so to speak, to save an innocent dog, I think you really need to think about what you're doing. There is no justification for this. I don't know if you guys are attorneys and you think that you're above the law, but that's, that's the impression that I get, and I think it's, I think it's awful. I don't know if you have kids, I don't know if you have pets, I don't know if you're just... What are you going to do with the labs that mull that person in Washington Township? You think they're going to put them down? No, they're not. But for some reason, you feel that Boomer has to die. Thanks.
Thank you. Your name and address, please?
My name is Robin Sheehan, 237 Walnut, Windout, Michigan.
Thank you.
Behavioralist state, no human aggression, and not dog aggressive for Boomer. Let Boomer go home to Justin, his daddy. Also, the Shermans are contractors paid for by the city taxpayers. Let Boomer go home to Justin, his daddy. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I please have your name and address?
My name is Enid Shear. I'm from Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Welcome.
And I would like to say, the city attorney cannot speak for their client or nor approve or disapprove the settlement. Let Boomer go home to Justin, his daddy. He really needs to go home.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shear. Good evening, ma'am, your name and address?
My name is Sharon. I'm from Sterling Heights.
Your last name, please?
My name is Sharon Stuckey.
Thank you.
My first thought here tonight is the lady who thought going on the website and Facebook and giving all of us people here the finger. I don't know if she's a member of your staff, I don't know if she works in your city, or she volunteers in your city, but I think you need to pay for her a class in how to be a lady. My second thought is this city needs to set Boomer free. An offer to send him where there is no hugs, no kisses, no plane, no contract is outrageous. What an offer. Who would accept that? Not me, not most likely you. As a matter of fact, it's a prison sentence. That's what you're giving him, a prison sentence. There is no proof this dog did this, and he's innocent until proven guilty, such as we all respect, that same procedure. Where there's, there was an offer. Was it a fair offer, or wasn't it a fair offer? And when I read that, I was sickened by the thought that a person can get on Facebook but can't talk anywhere else. I don't understand that. My third thought is I'm saddened and heartbroken for your city. And as I walked one mile in two flocks at 80 years old in your city for Boomer last Sunday, the people, your citizens and business owners, spoke of their disapproval and, in fact, were offering donations to help this dog. My fourth thought is just let Boomer go. There is no proof this was the work of a coyote. For God's sakes, what dog lives next door to another dog for two years and then just one night says, "Oh, I'm going to jump the fence and kill him"? Absolutely ridiculous. Give him his wife back, he deserves it. Let him go home. All he wants to feel is love, the same thing that we all want to be loved. He doesn't deserve a sentence to be caged up and never feel the love or the hugs and kisses from the contact of a person. Open your hearts, it's a wonderful feeling.
Thank you, Mrs. Stuckey. Your three minutes are finished.
No, I'm going to continue, please. I've sat here for three hours, and I'd like to continue. I'll take someone else's...
Ma'am, ma'am.
No, it doesn't work that way.
Ma'am, your three minutes are finished, ma'am. You must, you must let someone else speak.
I'm sorry, sir.
No.
Ma'am, your three minutes are finished.
Okay, I'll come back with my other two thoughts, which you want to hear, I'm sure.
Thank you, Ms. Stuckey.
Thank you.
Your name and address, please?
Yes, good evening. My name's Kim Pamavell, and I live 27728 Dalton, here in Madison Heights. Just a couple things that we handed out packets to everybody here, and I just hope that you would review them. They're pertaining to everything that we're saying here tonight. One of the questions that we have is why has there not been any charges placed against the primary witness in this case? The narrative report states, quote, "Boomer, the pit bull, hopped the fence and bit Chubbs, the chihuahua." However, at the trial, she testified, quote, "Justin asked me what happened, and I told him that I did not witness to see if Boomer did anything." Basically, she said, "I did not see what went on. I did not witness what happened to Chubbs." Okay, I want to say personally, for myself, I do not think that she lied. I do not accuse the woman of lying. I do believe that she responded to the scene at hand. You know, she went, saw Boomer in the backyard, and that was the first thing she thought. So no way am I saying she lied, okay? That's my personal feeling. However, the bottom line here is that this case is predicated on that police report. And once she changed her story in court, I don't know why this case should have been dismissed at that point, but it wasn't. Instead, it's gone on and on. Okay? Not saying the woman lied, okay? However, the other thing I want to say is that there's been a lot of, even in the brief written by the city attorneys, there's what I say is definitely a red herring thrown into the brief. And it is the introduction of information pertaining to the fact that Boomer's owner didn't maintain or keep up to date with his vaccinations and vet work and so on. Okay, albeit that is true, I'm sorry, but how is that relevant to this case? The bottom line in this case is who attacked and killed Chubbs. And I really feel the court and the city attorney tried to throw a red herring in there to make people think that Justin is a terrible pet owner, therefore, his dog must be the one who killed Chubbs. So that's basically, and he, by the way, pled no contest to that irrelevant information. That's what Mr. Christopher pled no contest to. And I don't know how, that never should have been ever allowed in the brief or anywhere else. Okay, and please, let Boomer go home to Justin, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Pamavell, thank you. Thank you, Ken, welcome.
I'll give my address, because I don't have to leave you. Name is Kenneth Smith, I'll spell my name, D H W, D H W.
Ken, can I interrupt you? If you do want to take more than three minutes and hold the microphone, will you let other people who will follow the rules?
Yeah, because this is important stuff. You know, I don't want to get heavy in this, I'm taking my three minutes now. You get to talk about the death of a dog. It's not a simple little thing with the city. It goes well beyond this. Anyhow, beyond a reasonable doubt, it must be used in all criminal cases. The word beyond is a very powerful word in legal terms. Madison Heights Court must not know what the word means. It, 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 it looks like we had a canyon room court because that's exactly what Boomer got to a T. Sherman and Hunt should be looking for the bar association, because they'll be looking for them. And they need to go back to law school if they don't know any more than beyond reasonable rights. That's been around a long time, that's a constitutional thing. So I don't know where the man gets his education, but that's up to him. And this conviction was well planned, far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, was well planned before even the court took place. All the top people, which include Hunt, Sherman, police chief, animal control, the council, the city manager... the city manager, knew about the situation and the conviction was already set up before the court, which can be done. First of all, no one seen the evidence for Boomer, no one seen Boomer kill Chubbs, even though the woman first said she did. Now, they brought in two professional people from two different places about animals, they knew about the animals. They said Boomer could not have killed Chubbs and he didn't kill Chubbs. And then someone, some even person said that he had a collar on that made him a killer. I mean, how wild can you get? They said it, I guess, I mean, I'm just going by what I read and what I see and what I know. And the investigation was followed all the way. I mean, I could not believe the person could investigate without getting blood, you could even got blood out of his mouth. I mean, there's a lot of places you get blood. But this person, I mean, I know who it is, this person did not know about investigation or didn't want, not want to investigate or whatever the reason was. And now they're saying the city council will determine his death. But the thing is gonna be determined in a closed meeting. Well, if it's gonna be a closed meeting, what are we hiding here? I mean, who can you trust in this city? Far as I'm concerned, nobody. I mean, it just, the court case itself is so out of bounds, it's just amazing, I can't even believe it, that this thing even got through. You know, and Boomer had some violations, which is true. No violation that would kill him or no violation that he deserved to be killed, either one.
Can you have used three minutes?
Huh?
You've used three minutes?
Yeah, I'm excited.
Okay. Our rules are each speaker gets three minutes.
Well, I don't want to make that rule, but you made them. Your own personal rules or not, I don't know.
It's been the historic rules and policy of the city.
Why you guys want to go home or something, the bar or something, I don't know what you want to do. But what's the herd?
For the efficient administration of our meetings, you've been afforded the opportunity to speak for three minutes.
Okay, I'll come, can I come back? I'll come back.
You've been given three minutes, thank you, Ken.
My name's Bob Keller.
I'm sorry, I missed your name, sir, I'm sorry.
Bob Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
He, uh...
Thank you, welcome, the floor's yours.
There was, I just noticed, you know, about a thing about someone in Iowa County about the same type of case. And the judge, uh, well, it's, a dog with two pit bull mixes were wrongly accused of killing goats and a cat and the dogs were found in the pen with the dead animals. They were seized and kept away and the dog was put away for 285 days. Well, there was no blood or anything on the dogs or anything else like that, right? All right, well, the judge re-looked the case and said, hey, it's over, send him home. About this, send Boomer home. Keep your tone, you know? Same kind of case.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Welcome, your name and address, please?
Diane Saber, 15251 Elderwood Street, Roseville, Michigan.
Thank you, welcome.
There is, we've had witness recant a statement, which should have been dismissed. We have a dog that, I'm a dog trainer, dogs do not disembowel another dog when they kill a dog. Okay, I think we all know that Boomer's innocent, every one of you know. Why this has gone on this long, I have no idea. I don't think it has anything to do with the dog, I think this has to do with Justin. I guess I'm up here wondering why we're spending so much money. We have no evidence, okay? This is cruel to do to a dog. I guess I'm asking the council to have a conscience, do what's right and send this dog home. There has no been, no acceptable resolution for this case. I mean, nobody in their right mind would accept an offer to go to jail, put restrictions on the dog that didn't murder another dog. The way Chubbs was murdered, killed, was by a wild animal. Wild animals disembowel other animals because it's food for them. When a dog kills, they don't kill to eat. They bite at the face, they bite at the throat, they bite at the neck. So nobody can sit here and argue with me, you are not dog experts, I am, that this dog killed Chubbs. As horrific as it is, there are coyotes and hawks everywhere. They're out to eat, they eat small animals. A pack of coyotes can take out a cow, okay? So I'm not gonna sit here and debate who knows dogs more than me because I know dogs, I work with them every day, I know how they kill, they do not disembowel. And if you want to go by facts on the case, you have none. And you have the power to do something. You can't overturn the judge's decision, but you can recommend. And as a city attorney, you have the power to advise your client to make, you know, some type of justifiable, acceptable resolution. This is personal, this is not about the dog, but now the dog is a pawn in this game. Send the dog home. Thank you.
Have you spoken already?
I have.
Let others speak first.
Hi, I'm Dela Vander Will, East Point.
Thank you, welcome back.
The whole Facebook thing of Boomer with the rabbit, that's not admitted into the evidence. Please let Boomer go home, free Boomer.
Good evening, your name and address, please?
I'm Tristan Avramov from Arayna, Michigan.
Welcome.
And I just want to say, so I'm in high school and I've been learning all about American history. And what I love about America is how much they love freedom and equality, yet I don't see that here. I mean, America went so far to make an act, I believe President Johnson, 1964, the Civil Rights Act, to ban discrimination, yet they're still discriminating with these dogs here. And how do I know that I can trust our government to not discriminate people and other things if they're still discriminating even animals? I mean, it's just a dog, like, you can't discriminate, it obviously didn't do it, there's no evidence, so please just let Boomer go, thank you.
Good evening, your name and address, please?
Good evening, Linda Kay, Arayna, Michigan. A couple points have already been addressed. One, I was very offended by, I've heard she works or volunteers for the city, it was addressed, Mary, Mary Bush, I don't know if you have the picture, we do, okay? I don't know if you're going to ticket her $150, okay? That was unhelpful. We don't do this stuff, we don't speak bile, we don't do gestures to anybody here. We're very polite, professional. Our protests have been targeted, I did speak to your police, we had a car come up, rolled down windows, aimed a high-powered water gun at us, we don't know if water was in it or not, a Dodge, a black Dodge Challenger, I spoke to Oakland County Sheriff, spoke to your police about this, again, we are there peacefully on our walk, thank you. The city was very polite in general. Your, your, yes, your lady, Mary, drove by and gave us her gestures during that day also. So this is what's representing your city. We aren't representing your city. Actually, a few of your police officers beat for us, gave us high fives, and your fire department that night, so thank you, or that day, thank you. Again, the city was very polite that day. We've already gone over the coyote situation, it doesn't have to be recounted, but on Detroit Free Press just did a huge article, there are so many people on Facebook saying, please watch out, our dog was targeted, our dog was this, our dog was that. I have pictures over and over, I can send to every one of you how a coyote kills, we already know that. I have pictures of coyote, how they're dragging their prey, hearing it in the abdominal area. I can forward all of this to you, we won't take time. I also have video, I'm going to send to every one of you, where a chihuahua, it was caught on a house video camera, chihuahua was outside, coyote came in, rammed this chihuahua and walked across the street. Out of nowhere, nowhere, the neighbor's rottweiler comes, goes after that coyote, attacks the coyote, drops the chihuahua, you can see the chihuahua run back and that coyote nails, the rottweiler nails that coyote. Again and again, dogs will come to help somebody in need, okay? I'm going to submit this video to every one of you, to the lawyers, everything. How a judge predicates that sentence, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a judge, but I'm studying, I'm asking, I have a lot of clients who are lawyers and judges, and I know there's preponderance of evidence, burden of proof beyond a reasonable block of doubt, clear and convincing, every single thing has to be 51% to 99% that this happened. We have been here every meeting, and just saying, we have one question, could you give us the evidence? We only have 1%!
Thanks, Linda Kay, you've used three minutes, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for the first time? First-time speakers? All right, any Madison Heights residents would like, they'd like to speak for a second time?
Okay, I apologize, I didn't know there was other people.
That's fine, thank you, Ken.
Well, I didn't know, that other people was talking, I didn't realize it was that type of people.
The clock will reset, I'll give you three more minutes.
But anyhow, let me move on here, I'll try to finish this up, because I'd like to finish it up. First of all, the city, far as I'm concerned, again, is making the owner be the guilty guy. If he doesn't agree to the false, heavy charges and many other things, then they're gonna, the city would say, well, we're gonna kill your dog because it's not us, it's the owner. And number two, that I have asked for oxygen masks for animals many, many times and nobody has acquired oxygen masks for animals, but we got money, tax money, well, listen to me, Mayor, we got tax money for to kill a dog, but we have nothing to save animals. Now, that's a very switch thing. So what was, what the city is saying to me, that they'd rather kill a dog than save a dog. And one thing about the city, unfortunately, I love this city, I was born in the city, but the one thing about the city, we're gonna have scars and bruises no matter what happens to Boomer. It's not gonna just go away if Boomer's saved or not saved. And that's a bad thing to have, because I was up to Flint the other day and I talked to a couple, they said, what city are you from? I said Madison Heights. First thing they said is Boomer. And maybe you guys don't remember, but Hazle Park Police Officer was killed because of an animal complaint. Now, I talked to our animal control officer and I asked him, did he have a gun? He said he wasn't qualified to have a gun. Now, what he did do, he showed me a hammer that he said he could use if he needed. And he said he wasn't qualified to catch coyotes, wild animals or anything else. Now, far as I'm concerned, the animal control officer killed my cat and I will never forget that. And it really makes it tough because my cat's four years. And another thing about the people here, if it wasn't for the people there, Boomer would have been dead a long time ago.
Thank you, Ken.
Let me say one thing, one more thing. My cousin, Boomer, a lead better, and his family, originally from Posse Creek, Kentucky, he said he likes to see me on TV. Hi, Boomer, hi, Boomer!
Thank you, Ken. Are there any other Madison Heights residents that want to speak? All right, we're gonna close meeting, open to the public. Ken, we have listened to you, we do have oxygen masks for animals that the fire department uses. I think we may have got a grant to fund that.
We did.
But yeah, well, the firefighters have that equipment and, I mean, for voices like yours, well, hopefully, we never have to use it on one of your pets or your neighbor's pets. But thank you, thank you for your comments.
One thing, I would like to see, I don't like, but somehow, like, the city gives little feedback, and sometimes, you know, that's why people quit coming. I'm not trying to be bold, but people quit coming because, look, it's like talking to a piece of wood. We don't get no feedback towards what we're saying or things are not done.
I'll tell you, the debate's not productive during the meeting, because it's a business meeting, however, we do have office hours.
But we never, I never hear if anything is being done, just like...
Thank you, Ken, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we can continue on the agenda, there are no communications, no items for future public hearings, except for the item we tabled. So that brings us to minutes. What's the wish, oh, I'm sorry, we do have two reports, I did skip the reports.
Three.
Three reports. Report D1 from the DPS Director, the designation of Act 51 Street Administrator. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, Michigan Public Act 51 governs the distribution of the state transportation taxes and fees. It requires the local governing body to designate a single administrator.
Please, there's continuing business, take your conversations out to the hallway. Mrs. Marsh, thank you.
It requires the local governing body to designate a single administrator to be responsible for and represent the municipality in transactions with the State Transportation Department under the act. Staff and I recommend that council approve a resolution designating interim DPS Director Corey Almas as the Act 51 Street Administrator for the city of Madison Heights. He will be replacing Joe Gattali.
Thanks, what's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we appoint Mr. Almas to be the city's Act 51 Street Administrator.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Support.
Thank you, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilmember Corbett, to designate Corey Almas as the city's Act 51 Street Administrator. Is there a discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The next report is item D2, it's from the police chief. It's a 2019 High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Subrecipient Agreement. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, the city of Madison Heights currently has a police officer assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team. Oakland County has applied for a grant for funding for $115,000 to reimburse net participating agencies for overtime cost. If Oakland County has awarded this grant, Madison Heights will be eligible for $4,600 of qualifying overtime. In order for the city to be reimbursed, we are required to pass a resolution approving the subrecipient agreement. Staff and I recommend that City Council adopt the resolution and authorize the city manager and the city clerk to sign the 2019 High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Subrecipient Agreement between Oakland County and the city of Madison Heights.
Thank you, what's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the recommended agreement. I'm not even gonna try and move that one. As recommended by...
Well-stated. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilmember Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to adopt the staff recommendation regarding the 2019 High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Subrecipient Agreement. Is there discussion?
Your Honor, that includes allowing the city manager and clerk to sign?
Yeah, is it, I'm sorry, was that included in the motion?
My oversight, sir, but absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Soltis, that's your agreement. Okay, is there further discussion on this item?
Your Honor, real quick, I just want to let the public know that this is an absolute critical role in the fire, excuse me, in the police department. I'm not sure how long he's been around, but they do, he does fantastic work and I'm glad to see that we're able to get some additional funding. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Other discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the motion carries. We do have another report, excuse me. The next report is D3, we added it. It was an agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the Madison Heights Command Officers Union. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the agreement negotiated between the city of Madison Heights and the Command Officers Association.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Grafstein.
Second.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to approve the agreement... to approve the agreement between the City of Madison Heights and the Madison Heights Command Officers Union. Um, it's a three-year term, to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Is there discussion from council? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries, all the reports, the motions carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'd ask unanimous consent to recognize the lady at the podium, otherwise we're just gonna sit here and look at each other, so, if you would perhaps extend her a couple moments of time, please, as a courtesy.
Okay, ma, you've spoke earlier tonight?
Yes, she did.
Okay, um, do you want an additional three minutes?
Yes, I would like to finish what I wanted, was trying to tell you, I think that's only respectful.
Uh, thank you for respecting our rules and asking for permission, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Sharon Stuckey, I live in Sterling Heights, Michigan.
Ms. Stuckey, the floor is yours.
My what?
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Have you been given prior offers? I have to know, have you been given prior, prior offers to settle the Boomer case? I asked that question, and I would like the answer to that at the next meeting, please. And I wanted to tell you that your judge and your police chief are only men, they're two men, they're not God, they're two men, and why you can't stand up to them and state your opinions and, and fight for what you think is right, is very unbecoming to me. I will, I will be here, and I will be speaking until that dog is free, and when the dog is free, you will never see me again. That's a promise, you'll never see me again, but until that dog is free, I will be here every other week, till the day I die, to see that dog free, because that's what he deserves, and that's the right thing to do. And thank you, sir, for allowing me to speak, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, what, the next, uh, business item will be the minutes, what's the wish of council, uh, wish of city council regarding the regular council minutes of four twenty-two nineteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes sir.
Sir, I move that we approve the minutes as printed of the meeting of four twenty-two nineteen, the regular minutes.
Very well, uh, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt as printed the regular city council meeting minutes of four twenty-two nineteen. Is, is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. What's the wish of city council regarding the minutes from the special city meeting of four twenty-nine nineteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gettings?
I move that we approve the meeting of April twenty-ninth, the special council meeting as printed.
Thank you, sir, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes sir.
Support, sir.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilman Gettings, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to adopt as printed the meeting minutes of four twenty-nine nineteen, the special city council meeting. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there any nominations to our boards and commissions this evening? Alright, hearing none, uh, we do not have an executive session tonight, so before we adjourn, I invite any closing comments from, uh, members of council and staff. I'd like to begin with Mr. Corbett, if you will.
Just a, a couple of quick items this evening, sir. First of all, going back a ways, if you can remember the vote on the Italia contractor, uh, although I voted in the minority, I have no problem with the decision to deny, I, I, in my opinion, and I think this goes to something that Pro Tem said, I think a vote to deny, or what would have been my personal preference, to redirect, uh, to, to open up the negotia- I suspect will be the same thing, I think you're gonna see the exact same thing. I hope we do. Uh, uh, otherwise, perhaps the worries of the mayor may come to fruition, but I, as, as somebody is, who's negotiated a couple of contracts in my life, I suspect that we will be revisiting this at, uh, at some point, hopefully better structured, at least logically, so we don't run into this problem again. Uh, I will be, uh, one more time at the library, uh, this, uh, year, and, uh, this coming Friday, I'll be there from one to three, uh, then normally I'm not there during the summer, um, but we'll pick up again, I, I think in the fall, but, um, so, but if one to three, and if you have any, uh, anything you want to discuss regarding the city, or any of the issues or so on, you're welcome to, uh, to stop by, um, and do, and do so. I would say with respect to myself, or any member of council, if you want to get a message, or have a meeting, or get a phone call, call the manager's office, and the, uh, staff there will direct the, uh, direct the request to the appropriate study. Um, I, I was thinking earlier today, the nine thousand odd dollar, um, money that, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem was talking about, something that's bothered me, and it, and it really doesn't go to, to where you stand on the issue of marijuana, whether you voted for it, or whether you voted against it, or anything of that. What concerns me is the, uh, is the absence of an education program, um, of any significance that's been proposed. Um, and that's my worry, I, I don't think that people, for example, of my age bracket, uh, know exactly that marijuana these days is not the same thing it was before. I think young people don't think it's the same thing as drinking, that's some of the worries, I, and to be honest with you, I think you, you face that whenever, whenever you've got seniors in high school, there's an active campaign right now, don't drink and drive. Um, and when people are, uh, turning twenty-one, you, you would hope that, uh, somebody has some good sense with them, so I would, I would like to, to ask that a, uh, that the staff, uh, talk to the, uh, to the crime commission, or the, uh, I'll be right with you, uh, the crime commission, or the, uh, um, youth-
Youth assistance.
Thank you, youth assistance. Uh, and ask if they might consider submitting into the pot, uh, an, an education program, uh, that, uh, that might be, and I don't know what form it would take, uh, you know, I'm, I'm old school, I automatically think of like brochures and stuff, but I suspect that, that, uh, somebody more enlightened would be able to, to come up with a, uh, a program, but I think that would be a reasonable use of the money too, along with all the other things, saving lives and, um, and, uh, and helping, uh, folks, uh, I think would be a good use of that money. Uh, that's all I have this evening, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor, I, I think we, uh, uh, did a great job of satisfying our chief role as being, uh, great stewards of the money, uh, that is entrusted by, uh, entrusted to us by the taxpayers. I, I think to Councilman Corbett's point on, on the, the savings, I, I actually believe that that's already included as a part of the scoring mechanism, uh, that community outreach is, is an element of that, and so the folks that are submitting, uh, are likely to include that, and likely to be scored positively because they're including that type of educational outreach into the community.
I, I, yeah, it, it just, I, I saw that, but I would like some educational program that isn't dependent upon commercial interest necessarily, in terms of its direction, I'd like something that, that, uh, the, uh, the youth assistants could, uh, could control the specific message, but, I appreciate your point, yes, I did see that.
It's a, it's a potential strong funding mechanism for that at any rate, uh, not necessarily their control of the messaging, but it could simply be their control of paying for said outreach, so, I'd, I'd, I'd like to be able to, uh, see what, what comes out of that prior, but I believe both of those things will coincide over the three-month period we're accepting these, uh, proposals from the boards anyway, so, I, I think one of the, the goals that I had with the Quality of Life Boards is, they're often the ones who ha- have gotten kind of left in the dark with a lot of our budgets over the last handful of years, uh, investments have been far fewer there, and this is a small amount of money, but it could make a lot of impact into those Quality of Life Boards, so we're really excited to see that. Uh, speaking of, uh, Quality of Life Board, uh, the Arts Board has a cool program, uh, next week, on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-second, uh, so not next week, but, uh, nine days from now, uh, they are doing a, a, uh, seminar called Don't Tell Me What to Do Creative Careers, Volume One. It's at, uh, the Madison High School, and it's geared towards folks of all ages looking, uh, to be able to earn an income from their creative interests, and it's, it's gonna be a phenomenal program, I'm really excited about it, I'd encourage anybody who knows any budding artists, whatever their age, to, uh, come out to, uh, Madison High School on Wednesday night, the twenty-second, it goes from six to nine, uh, there's gonna be three artists who all make a living doing their art, uh, speaking and talking about their experience, it's gonna be very valuable. Uh, finally, my last item is, is kind of a follow-up, um, gosh, it was probably a month and a half, two months ago, uh, I asked for a letter sent to the Board of Commissioners about, uh, parking at the nature center. Uh, I want to make sure that that has not fallen off the staff's radar, I think it's really important for us to make sure that our residents who are effectively paying for any and all improvement, and own that property, are able to park there free of charge, and, and I want to make sure that there is a letter sent, and if that needs to go as a resolution before council, I, I would be in favor of that as well, I just want to make sure there is movement there. I'm sure there is, but-
There is a meeting scheduled.
Um, Councilman Bliss, it's actually in the confidential from last week, we submitted that letter to the board and requested a meeting with them, so it's already been taken care of.
Good work. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bliss?
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Gettings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just want to remind everybody, we have the Memorial Day Parade coming up on Saturday, May twenty-fifth, I believe, uh, down at twelve and John R., and I believe it'll be starting around ten o'clock, and moving up John R. to City Hall, and wishing the community come out and take part in this great activity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, I'd actually, actually like to give a thank you out to Linda Williams, who is the Economic Development Coordinator, that's not her exact title at the city, but during the four months that community development was without a director, she really stepped up, and she also submitted the city to join the Oakland County Main Street Program, and last Thursday, she and I were honored to be able to attend the Main Street Program at Oakland County, and, and were accepted as the twenty-fifth community of that program, so we're looking forward to some exciting things to happen with that, to specifically target it at our downtown development area.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
Um, yes, you may have noticed in your mailbacks that you received a red and white, um, postcard application, um, if you are interested in becoming a permanent, uh, registered, a permanent voter, uh, being, uh, included in our permanent voter list, just fill the app, the application out and send it back to the city, city clerk's office, or drop it off in our drop box, this will, um, enable the city clerk to, um, mail you an application for every election, if you'd like to participate in that election, all you simply do is fill out the application, and then we can send you a ballot. Thank you.
Instead of mailing it in, can they drop it in at the, the box outside?
Yes, certainly.
Oh, okay.
They can bring it in, drop it off, or, um, mail it.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Permanent absent. Permanent absentee voter.
Thanks for that. Good catch. Uh, Ms. Grafstein?
Hey, just, uh, on the heels of, uh, Main Street Oakland, I just finished a, um, course with, uh, Michigan Economic Development Corporation for Redevelopment Ready Communities, so hopefully we can use some of that training to go along with the Main Street Oakland. Um, if you're paying attention to what's going on in the city, you'll see that there are a lot of things that we are trying to bring in new businesses and revitalize the businesses that we have, there are vacant buildings, there is vacant land, and we are trying to bring those back to life, and, um, you, spark the city to get people to come here, to be here, to be walkable, to, as people are mentioning today, money to spend their money here, and, um, the one-stop, is there, the Main Street is good, we're part of one-stop, hopefully we'll be able to work with the redevelopment-ready communities, um, new businesses coming in, several people want to come into the, uh, into the city, and they want to bring in the medical marijuana businesses, I know that is, uh, controversial, but, um, if we do it right, it will bring in some revenue, not all the revenue that we need probably, but it will increase our tax base, because what we're looking at is having the vacant buildings, the derelict buildings, the vacant lands, that are paying little to no taxes, are going to start becoming, uh, a good tax base for us. With the, um, comment about marijuana education, there are several programs out there, um, I have attended many different education programs for free, uh, I went to one in Bloomfield the beginning of April, um, Mr. Corbett, you would have joined me as being one of the youngest people there. The, the people who were there-
Were they still breathing?
They were in their-
Right.
They were in their eighties and the nineties.
Oh my.
Okay, and, um, there are a lot of questions that were asked, and there was a gentleman who was asking about, uh, how, how or if cannabis could help his wife, who was suffering from, uh, breast cancer, so, they're very aware that it's, it's medical, and this was Michigan's Cannabis Industry Association, the Director of Outreach was speaking, I'm sure that if we reached out to her, she would be able to come here as well, um, and yes, of course, they're going to have the slant on it, but everybody I've talked to in the industry, uh, feels that it is not for children, it, it is not for minors, it is not for anyone who's going to get behind the wheel, it's for responsible use. Um, I was also a participant in a Lara work group back in April, um, there were about twenty people, and it was, it was the state government who was running this work group, they had several of them, and they were looking to find out, how can we help in the community, what can we do, there are a lot of, uh, there's a lot of good that can come out of this, if this is done right, when we were, uh, when we were having our, uh, open to the public about this topic, you know, there was a woman who came and she had Weed Maps on her phone, and I've spoken to the people at Weed Maps, and the woman who spoke is correct, there, there are places where you can go, and they are seedy, and you don't want to go, and you don't want them in your neighborhood, but there are also some, I would use the term upscale, and there, those ones, those ones are okay, and they're the ones who care about the clients, I've talked to people who have, they're going to have nurses on staff, they're going to have medical, so, yes, this can be scary, and yes, we want to make sure that it's not with our children, but if you talk to the coalition, and if you talk to the police, it's with the children already.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and if it's in, if it's in the home, then it's really, it's the parent's responsibility to keep it from their kids, because the kids should not be accessing any legal marijuana, and they should not be accessing any alcohol either, so, um, and I want to say thank you, everyone, for passing the noxious weeds, um-
That we're speaking of.
Speaking of, the other kind of weed, um, you know, part of the reason that that came about was because, uh, milkweed is, uh, a noxious weed, and you're not allowed to have it in the city, which means we don't want butterflies in our city, because that's what butterflies live off of, so, with this nine thousand extra, I would love to see rain gardens and pollinator-friendly plants, and things like that, you know, that are going to, um, that are going to help with the aesthetics in the city, and they're gonna help with the environment, I expect that Mr. Bliss is gonna jump in and say, I want another mural, um, so, you know, if we could find a way to do something with the two of those ideas, you know, or other ideas as well, you know, just if we could, uh, I mean, I, I love the fact that we've got the, as he's using it now, is that we've got the reusable water bottles, you know, that was great, and I appreciate that just because, um, the Arts Board is the Arts Board, they don't say, oh, I don't, I don't want to do something else, and Mr. Bliss said to me, this is something we're thinking of doing, we want to do these reusable bottles, I'm like, that's great, that's great, you know, it, it didn't come from us, it came from them, but, that's fine, there's a lot of good ideas out there, and I think the more that we work together, the more ideas that we can come up with, I personally would like to see our next mural, um, closer to businesses, uh, somewhere that mural goes up, and it becomes a place-making, people say, let's go look at the mural, and then let's walk a block and get an ice cream at the local ice cream shop, you know, and if we could do that with the garden, maybe we get one of my gardens made by one of your artists. That's it for the evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, it appears that some people on the council aren't aware of the education we have done for years, for, especially for our youth, about the use of drugs, alcohol, and other substances that are abusive. Um, there is a coalition that is meeting there, if you remember Marilyn Russell, who was a councilwoman, was one of the people that started the coalition, the Madison Heights Youth Coalition, which is now, used to be the Family Coalition, now it's called the Community Coalition, because it belongs to the whole community, and I have been appointed as council rep on that committee, so I would urge any of you who think there's not education to our citizens about the use of marijuana, et cetera, that you attend those meetings, because they're there for your benefit, they're there for the benefit of our community, they meet on the third Thursday of every month at ten thirty a.m., right here in the Madison Room at City Hall. They are granted roughly twenty thousand dollars a year, and that grant money goes to- goes towards educating our youth in the community, not only in Madison Heights, but all around, about the abuse of use of drugs. There is one pamphlet after another that we have passed out. Everybody on that committee is very interested in the city. The police, chief of police sits on that committee, former fire chief Jim Martin sits on that committee, so does Ricky Bustler. I can give you a list if you, we would like to know them. But they all sit on that committee. We all advocate for education to the youth about making wise decisions in everything that they do. And I'm sorry that they are not, you are not aware of that, and I think it's a shame that you are not aware of that. And I would urge all of you to come to those meetings and give your input, because it's very important from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Well, these are long sessions, aren't they? Kind of exhausted. You know, first, I gotta, I gotta commend the mayor on how he conducts the meetings, and I, I think you do an outstanding job, very professional. They're tough, and you keep it orderly and fair. So, you know, I commend that.
It's under your direction. I, I'm following your rules, but thank you for saying.
Um, so, Mayor Pro Tem talked about clean water, so I'm going to go through this real quick. I, I agree. Our, our clean water is essential in our environment. Fortunately, we have this ordinance now that further prevents pollution from recycling companies. But I, I'd really like to request a similar ordinance for manufacturing companies. We do have a large manufacturing sector, but I think that we have a long history of, of hazardous spills and contaminations. And I'd really like to see an ordinance that really cracks down on those offenders, those that pollute our land and water. So if, if we can in the future work on that, I really appreciate that. Secondly, the police week. I want to congratulate all our officers who, who attended tonight and were awarded citations, or excuse me, facts and so forth, for the courage and selflessness. Our police department of men and women are second to none, in my opinion. We have the finest law enforcement by far. They risk their lives, risk their lives every day when they put on that uniform. We all know that. They deserve the utmost respect. Unfortunately, through the nation, not every citizen has respect for the law, and sadly, some officers do not make it home. In two thousand sixteen, there were one hundred and seventy-four officers that died in line of duty. Seven of them were from Michigan. In fact, one of them was Sergeant Steele. I attended the, the wake, or excuse me, the, the viewing, and it was quite a scene. In two thousand seventeen, nationally, nationwide, it was one hundred and twenty-eight that died, five from Michigan. Twenty eighteen, there were one hundred and forty-four officers that died in the line of duty, and three from, three from Michigan. And so far, for nineteen weeks, in two thousand nineteen, there's been eighteen officers that died in the line of fire. So I think we owe them all respect and gratitude. And lastly, we're doing the senior trip again. This will be my sixth year, taking the seniors up to older Michigianian Day in Lansing. Hopefully, it doesn't rain. I don't want to jinx it, but they, it hasn't in the last five years. But I, I want to apologize. This year, we had more people wanting to come on the trip than, than we have room. We only have a forty-person bus. And I swear, there was like over fifty-five that, that wanted. So I apologize to those that we had to have to cut off at forty. Next year, we'll make sure that we have two buses ready to go, because, you know, I think it's important. I think it's important. And, and I'm really glad that we had that enormous response. So that's all. Thank you.
Great. I'll be sure to invite everyone that spoke tonight to get the one-on-one time on a closed bus with you for an hour and a half one-way.
No, we're going to take a separate car, because we need the seats.
Great. Yeah, I do want to thank city council for appreciating the importance of robust debates amongst ourselves and listening to the important feedback from the public. I mean, many, many of the people that speak to us don't have experience with public speaking or addressing governments, so there must be some exceptions made to tolerate their unprofessionalism and their inarticulateness, because there is a true message behind those flaws. And it's an important tradition of our city to accept public comment into the record. I think we found maybe an efficient balance tonight, bringing back the one item in our agenda, the ability to bring agenda items forward. That still cements the importance of meeting open to the public near the front of the meeting. So for now and for all ever, that will still signify the importance of public comment. Oh, to our Muslim brothers and sisters, Happy Ramadan. My neighbor, Iqbal, educated me to say Ramadan Rabbarik, or Ramadan Kareem, which just means Happy Ramadan, or Happy Blessings to Ramadan. Ramadan is the holiest month of the year for our Muslim brothers and sisters. It's a time of fasting. The very devout Muslims in our community, they don't eat from sundown, sunup to sundown, and they break their fast at sunfall. And that is an opportunity for them to recognize human frailty and to show sacrifice, and that there are bigger objects than ourself. And it's also Ramadan is a time to teach our kids to clear all negative thoughts from their mind. It's truly a wonderful, exciting time of year. And so to the, my brothers and sisters who are breaking their fast as they watched our meeting, I hope you and your families have a blessed Ramadan tonight, and for the rest of the month of Ramadan. I want to thank the brothers, Sherman, Larry, and Jeffrey, for your service to the city. And as a fellow licensed attorney, I, I think you all agree how remarkable Hugh Thomas is. And his, Hugh Thomas, we recognized him as the special environmental counsel for Madison Heights, who's retiring. And, you know, I, I look at his ability to calm the temperature, but also get the object done. And he's done that for many years, protecting the health of our residents and educating council and the community on how important it is to fight big polluters who choose to poison our air, land, and bodies. And so Hugh Thomas's legacy will continue as our mission to prevent those polluters going forward. So thank you to everyone who joined us tonight. Congratulations to the new police reserve officer, William Anderson. And congratulations, and thank you to those police officers and residents who save lives so frequently, and to all those officers who were not recognized tonight, but risk their lives every time they make a traffic stop. It's just remarkable and breathtaking what you do to keep us safe. There's no other business before city council. The meeting is adjourned.